City of Somerton Regular Council Meeting. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilman?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible in its essence.
Mayor Ramaya?
President.
Vice Mayor, Mr. Garcia?
President.
Councilmember Miguel Vialpando? Councilmember Miguel Vialpando?
Somebody present?
Councilmember Juan, I'm sorry, Carlos Gonzalez? Councilmember Liz Galindo?
President.
Councilmember Susan Dan?
President.
Councilmember Juan Castillo?
President.
Mayor, have a question.
Thank you.
Come to the public, anybody from the public wishing to address council?
No one? There's one item in consent agenda. Item number, uh, item is approval of August fourteen, August eighteen, and September first, twenty twenty Regular Council Meeting.
Thank you very much, sir. Put consent agenda.
It's a motion by Councilman Castillo.
Yeah. It's a by Councilman O'Donnell, in favor, and approved.
Moving on to old business. Item number one, discussion of possible action regarding the second reading of by title only of ordinance number twenty twenty zero zero four, an ordinance of mayor and city council of the city of Somerton, authorizing the rezoning of real property described as accessory parcel number twenty eleven zero four zero one seven from general commercial, light industrial, and single-family residential to government for development of future Somerton Elementary Schools.
Good evening, mayor and council. Um, if you have any questions for me pertaining to the item that was presented at the previous meeting, I'll be happy to answer any questions. If not, I would like to ask for a motion for the second reading of this ordinance.
Any questions, comments? There are motion to approve second reading by title only of ordinance number twenty twenty zero zero four.
Sure.
Motion by Councilman O'Donnell.
Okay.
It's a by Councilman Castillo, others in favor? Approved. Motion carries.
And this is ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero zero four, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Somerton, Arizona, amending ordinance number twenty fifteen dash zero zero two, and rezoning certain areas in the city for real property described herein as accessory parcel number two eleven dash zero four dash zero one seven, a twenty-six point seventeen acre parcel, more or less, and more particularly described on exhibit eight attached here too, from C two, general commercial, light industrial, L I and R one six, single-family residential to government. Thank you.
The motion to approve ordinance number zero twenty zero zero four. Motion by Councilman O'Donnell.
Yeah.
It's a by Councilman Castillo, others in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business. Discussion of possible action regarding capital improvement projects for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Yes, uh, mayor and council, as we had our, our work study session, obviously, the, the public works, um, K I P project will continue. Um, uh, but the items that we need guidance on would be on parks and recreation, which would be the, the state park, uh, H V A C. Um, any, any recommendations on Main Street redevelopment, uh, grand lighter precision, uh, low-cost equipment for seniors? Um, and equipment maintenance, or new equipment that, uh, Councilmember Vialpando had mentioned? Oh, any, any recommendations? Or guidance?
Well.
Um, what I gather from our last session, the work session, um, it will be HVAC, the, uh, skate park, the, uh,
the, the senior equipment.
And if we get the Kokopa funding that goes towards that. And, and also the, uh, to start facing in the, um, the downtown development project. Understand there's adequate funding in our, in our budget, it was budgeted, and we were looking at how the situation would be with COVID, but it's, uh, we're doing good as we saw in the previous meeting.
Sales tax.
There's enough funding there. What do you say? Anybody else from council want to add? Anything, comment?
We're looking into the finance system or?
Well, I'm just going over the, what the mayor and council projects were first, and then we'll jump into the second one. That's okay. Um, the other one that, uh, uh, Councilmember Vialpando had mentioned is the equipment. Um, and that one can be phased in, in, in three years, twenty-four years, uh, depending on when, obviously, the high school and, and items are breaking out. Breaking in place for parks and recreation. I know there's items that have been, um, bought, which for, it's, uh, for public works, although they were approved already as well, and it's part of the K I Ps, uh, for the equipment maintenance, or equipment, rather, new equipment, um, for parks and recreation is, is needed, and those can be phased in 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 about three years, four years, depending on when the high school coming and, and I, I don't, uh,
All broken, right?
And I think if we're doing that, maybe by fifty thousand dollars a year, it would, would cover to that point. And then, um, oh, sorry, Jim. Oh, one more item that we just discussed is the structural analysis and revitalization of Old City Hall. So we, we sent those, uh, that's structural as well. Uh, we can continue with, uh, looking at possible, um, either looking at structurally sound and/or tearing down City Hall that's an item we can always bring back up. But, uh, as far as, uh, staff projects, the financial system, um, and that's so an excess of a hundred thousand, more than a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Compensation analysis, that we already have the funding for it. Um, the video system for council chambers. And, um, the other two items, we'll bring them at, uh, the budget for future in terms of saving them.
Again, we discussed the year fee is important and, uh, be a one-time or two-investments if we do it then, but then it's gonna be just to make this be on. Or eventually it's gonna be, uh, gonna improve our, our level of service and also our staff time, yeah, whole system.
And remember with this, uh, system also, it, it does, and I think we can also phase it in depending on how I, I T can, can manage. Um, i- I know it's gonna take a couple of months, even up to next fiscal year, is our, our I T systems across the the entire, um, City Hall building.
And the video system, of course. Yeah, the, uh, on, 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 on the City Hall, my preference has always been to save the historical building, but then we need to see the, the reality and have, uh, you know, estimate how much it would cost to retrofit that building, but I feel that it's, that it's, uh, that we, we need to save it, but then again, it's been brought up before councils, some council members are not in favor, so that probably a separate item that needs to be brought up. With more data, and, uh, that's, uh, that's probably something that's gonna be divided, but, you know, we're, we're a council and that I would, I would like to say do this as much as possible, but I think we're ready to commit, at least at this point. But we're ready to start. We do, we did get the structural analysis, so we can start getting at least some idea how much it would cost, and we can make a more informed decision for the, for the future on that. Any other comments?
Also with the compensation, uh, compensation analysis, uh, move forward as well?
The, the council members.
No, I, I, I mean, I'm in agreement.
It concludes, and, um, we need as, uh, action based on those recommendations. There are motion to select capital improvement projects, as we discussed. Mention by Vice Mayor Garcia, taken by Councilman O'Donnell, those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Motion carries. Item number two, discussion of possible action to approve and hire new positions for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty-two-one as established through budgetary process.
Good evening, mayor and council, Jorge Lozano, uh, city attorney and chief personal officer. Earlier this evening, through a work session, we learned about various, uh, positions that were that, that staff had recommended, uh, for hire here at the, at the city of Somerton. Uh, briefly, we are, uh, requesting a court officer, which would come in and, and have a financial impact on our city of about, uh, forty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety dollars a year. That includes, uh, a base salary and, and benefits. Also, at the police department, a property and evidence technician, which comes at about fifty thousand dollars. A records supervisor or manager for the police department at about fifty-three thousand eight hundred dollars. A, uh, full-time graphic designer. Currently, we have a part-time graphic designer and adding a full-time designer with benefits would have a net impact of twenty-three thousand dollars. And the administrative part-time assistant has no benefits, but that comes at about fourteen thousand dollars a year. Uh, we also presented, you know, some of, some of the, uh, various areas in, in our police audit that, that, uh, we, we fired some of these positions, and the elimination, uh, through the last, uh, budget cycle of a police captain that, that sustains that, uh, those two positions. Uh, the court officer is, is per state mandate. And, and the graphic designer is, is per, you know, an increased workload in, in that area for, for the city. And the admin assistant was, is requested, um, to continue supporting some of the activities in the finance department. So overall, if all of these positions were brought in, uh, that has a net impact on our budget of about a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. This is a reoccurring expense, although because we have sustained a, a captain position for the last couple of years, that, that, that amount, I think we can factor in as, as eliminating that, that impact on, on our budget. And, uh, you know, hoping for discussion today on how do you, how you wish to proceed on, on these positions, whether you want to bring, you know, all of them in, some of them in, or, or none of them in, and in an approximate timetable that you decide to move forward on, on bringing, uh, these new employees.
Thank you, um, you know, from our discussion, the work session. Uh, there was some discussion and, and, and maybe, uh, for next budget cycle, looking at, uh, the, uh, who was it, was it, on the records supervisor, those positions to look at the part-time or maybe the full-time, or, but that's, uh, decision. Uh, there was, um, also discussion on the administrative assistant, that, in that department. Uh, we're, this is probably the first time in two years of it being fully staffed. Maybe that can be analyzed, and it may be, we can add it in, in the future, but I think from what I got from council and great different month, we're approving the court officers, the property ev- evidence technician, records, manager, and, uh, graphics.
Yeah. I, I, I do agree with, with that. I mean, I feel that the administrative assistant, I mean, I mean, once it's fully staffed, then, uh, you know, uh, our city manager can, can assess that situation, um, with the, the, and proceed if the need is there.
Yeah, I, I would like to have control over it in terms of, you know, even if it gets approved, doesn't mean it can get filled. Um, it might.
Not get filled at all.
So, does council want to approve it now, or should we, we be brought up later? Or is that give?
Yes.
Mayor, I have a quick comment. Uh, I, I feel that we could go ahead and move forward and leave it at the discretion of the city manager. But quite honestly, that's, that's within his realm, and that's quite, and that's where he gets paid for, so, I mean, he could pretty much let us know when they're gonna hire, or when he feels that they're, they're ready to hire these positions and move forward.
So is there, is there a motion?
Uh, mayor, I'll make the motion to approve, but just for clarification, that we are gonna make that full-time graphic designer and forego on the position of the marketing, I believe it's marketing specialist.
That's correct.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to.
The motion by Councilman Vialpando. Taken by Councilman Galindo, those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Motion carries. Discussion of possible action to review and approve final plat amendment for, by, by the Soul Phase Three subdivision, P L M, ninety zero 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 one eight.
Good evening, mayor and city council. The item before you tonight is a request for an amendment to an approved final subdivision plat. This is a request by B N A Vega of Vega and Vega P L L C on behalf of Linton Management Incorporated, California Corporation, for Bay of the Soul Phase Three subdivision, generally located on the southeast corner of Bingham Avenue and Twelfth Street. The new proposal is to reduce the original approved number of lots from seventy to sixty-seven residential lots, and to add a second stormwater retention basin tract, and eliminate the storm drain lift station that was previously approved. Mayor and council, this is a, a returning case. We were here before you with this particular, um, final plat back in twenty nineteen. The project data has not changed. We have the same information. The land use has not changed either. And as background and description of the site, we have a preliminary subdivision plat that was approved in twenty eighteen, and a final, final subdivision plat that was approved by council on July twenty-third of twenty nineteen to develop a seventy-lot, low-density residential subdivision on the site with one tract for stormwater retention basin. Improvement plans were approved, and the developer initiated subdivision infrastructure installation in early twenty twenty. Once the material and equipment submittals were submitted by the developer and reviewed by the city's contract engineer, the outcome of this review revealed major changes needed to be done on the proposed drainage lift station to achieve its full purpose, resulting in costly upgrades to the developer to construct in future costly maintenance expenses to the city once this drainage lift station would be accepted by the city. So at this time, B N A Vega of Vega and Vega Engineering, um, has submitted a request to amend the approved final subdivision platform by the Soul Phase Three, and it is proposing to develop sixty-seven residential lots and two tracts, this time for stormwater retention basin, instead of the approved seventy residential lots with one tract and the one drainage lift station. There are no changes that are expected in the land use, circulation, parks, and open space, airport development, airspace encroachment, sewer and water, water conversion or improvement district elements, which were approved by council back in twenty nineteen, and that are described in the, um, in the staff report. No changes to any of those elements. So, um, we can move on those ones, and move to the actually, um, the actual element that is being changed, which is the stormwater. This development was approved, including one tract of land on the north side of the subdivision to be dedicated to the city upon recordation of the final plat. This tract shall be improved and in compliance with the requirements of the zoning and subdivision code. In order to allow stormwater flow of this tract, the developer included the installation of a stormwater drainage lift station to be located on Shoya Avenue between Twelfth Street and Twelfth Place. The developer also included a forty-foot by fifteen-foot stormwater drainage easement, a one-foot non-access easement, and an eight-foot utility easement at this location. The proposed change includes a cancellation of the stormwater drainage lift station, the forty-foot by fifteen-foot stormwater drainage easement, a one-foot non-access easement, and an eight-foot utility easement at this location, and replace it with the construction of a new stormwater retention basin to be located along Shoya Avenue between Twelfth Street and Twelfth Place. This retention area will have an area of eighteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine point twenty-eight square feet and a depth of six point five feet with a slope of three to one. Because the depth is more than four feet, the adopted Yuma County standards require an enclosure with a solid wall with, um, a solid wall of a minimum six feet in height. Both stormwater retention basins will be connected to the future South Somerton Storm Drainage System, and in lieu of using this newly proposed retention basin as open space, the developer will be required to improve the section of pathway along County Seventeen Street between Bingham Avenue and Somerton Avenue with a ten-foot wide asphalt pathway. We have some recommendations that I would like to skip for now and move to the actual exhibits, um. I would ha, I would like to, um, move into exhibit eight. These are conditions of approval. These are the standard conditions that were approved uh, back in twenty nineteen, except for conditions number ten and sixteen. If I may, I can just move to conditions ten and sixteen, mayor? All this was approved back in twenty nineteen, except for stormwater condition. This is a new, um, condition. Number ten, on the property, stormwater on the property will be managed with on-site retention located on tracks A and B of the proposed plat. Developer must assure this, there is adequate stormwater retention capacity as required in the subdivision code. And we also have added condition number sixteen. This is new. And this is in lieu of using the new stormwater retention basin on track B as open space, the developer shall improve the full section of pathway along County Seventeen Street between Bingham Avenue and Somerton Avenue with a ten-foot wide asphalt pathway prior to the city's acceptance of the subdivision, similar in cost to what it had been previously agreed upon between the city and the developer of fifty thousand dollars. We, we move to the next exhibit. This is the plat that was approved back in twenty nineteen. This is the area that there are, uh, the amendment is being proposed. This is the, um, the, uh, drainage lift station that was approved with the final plat. Right here, this lift station would pump the, the rainwater to the, to the retention basin on the north side of the subdivision, and then this, from here, it would be discharged south to the, uh, main canal along County Seventeen. So that was the proposal. That was how it was presented, how it got approved. And, uh, based on the recommendation of our city engineer, the, um, the amendment that is being proposed is this one. The, uh, developer is using three of the residential lots that were approved previously. That's why there's a reduction in lots, and now there is a new track B. The track A is the one, uh, on the north side, and this will be, would be the track B. That will be, uh, in, in essence, in an enclosed retention basin. Because of the depth, we need to, um, also require a masonry wall of six foot in high around the perimeter of this retention basin. This is the only change that is being proposed. If you have any questions, um, I have tonight with us, we have the applicant, we have the, uh, city engineer, Jim Davis, and we also have public works. This is, uh, a field that, uh, public works staff will, will be able to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, comments?
Mayor, I have a question for Sam.
Let me show you.
Yes, those collars on the water lines there at, uh, on Bingham are, is, who's gonna replace them as a developer, or are we gonna replace them? Cause they're all, they're all broken, they're all, they're stunk in someone, and I noticed that all they did was tie in all the asphalt to the existing elevation of those collars.
Uh, Councilmember Vialpando, the developer will replace those. We already discussed with them, and they agreed to replace those.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Are you done with your presentation?
I'm done with my presentation. Um, the other exhibits are, uh, just the location map. And, um, if you don't have any more questions, I can go back to the, um, to the, the motion, asking for a motion to, um, to approve this amendment that are being presented.
There are motion to approve, uh, this amendment that's presented. Motion by Councilman O'Donnell. Taken by Councilman Castillo, those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Item number four, discussion of possible action to approve Core Engineering Group, Dar Robbins and Associates, Nicholas Engineering for Roadway and Transportation Engineering Services, and Nicholas Engineering, Pace Engineering, and James Davy and Associates for Water and Wastewater Engineering Services. Mr. Palas?
Uh, good evening, mayor and city council. As, as you mentioned, there before you, we used to, uh, discuss and, uh, possibly select the top three firms for the RFQ, uh, P W twenty twenty-one dash zero zero six and zero zero seven. Uh, the background in this item, uh, as you know, we have several capital improvement projects that needs to be designed and constructed in the near future. Uh, in addition, we are in the need to have an engineering firm for consulting purposes as, as needed. Our typical public works projects involve Broadway and transportation and water and wastewater engineering services. Uh, we advertise the request for proposal for such engineering services. Uh, currently, Uh currently, we receive a total of eleven proposals. Uh five for roadway transportation design services and six for water and wastewater design services. The consultants are Nicholas Engineering, Dahl Robbins and Associates, James Davy and Associates, Vega and Vega Engineering. Ace Engineering and Core Engineering for those uh eleven um firms. Uh our recommendation, based on the scoring conduct conducted by the selection committee. It is recommended to uh select a top three firms for each RFQ. Uh those firms are Core Engineering, Dahl Robbins and Associates, and Nicholas Engineering for roadway and transportation design services. And Ace Engineering, Nicholas Engineering, and James Davy and Associates for water and wastewater design services.
Is there any questions or comments?
I have one, Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Yefan.
Uh Sam, could could you uh tell us who all was involved in your committee, please?
It was involved. Iselda Enriquez, our purchase agent, Vidal Ochoa, Hector Tapia, and myself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion? A motion by Vice Mayor Garcia. Taken by Councilman Rodan, in favor. Any opposed? Motion clear.
Item number five, discussion of possible action to approve JSA Company for landscaping services for improvement district. Mayor and Council, um Jesús Mesa is a proud father today, so he's he's at it with his family. I know Rodney's on the phone, I believe, as well, but um the IFB went out a couple of weeks ago and the decision was made. Uh actually, only one company actually sent in the bid and it was for JSA. The the uh the proposal looked reasonable in terms of what we asked for. Um it was. It was seen by Jesús, our procurement specialist, uh Rodney and Jesús. And um I think it was yourself too, no? Anyway, it's only one person um sending their their quote and there's and the other ones turned it down because of the liability that they didn't want to. So looking at JSA's um contract, it's very reasonable to. To ask what they're uh going to the services they're gonna be providing. Remember, some of these services will be provided when asked for, not necessarily uh all the time. I know during the winter season, um it will be mostly dormant. Um most of the work will end up happening in February, uh March when the staff starts. Um speaking with Rodney, it seems like um they will not go over budget at all. Yes, that is correct. We're gonna continue obviously looking at budget just to make sure that um it's like ongoing process.
Do you have the rates there?
Yes, she should go. The way it was done, it was based on square footage. And that's how the city of Yuma had it as well. And I believe JSA is doing today in Yuma.
Any questions, comments?
Well, hopefully, it's an improvement to to a resident um to, you know, over all the uh. Those retention that are in the uh those uh improvement districts. We we we're looking at actually with uh I spoke with Rodney this uh this morning, they came uh. Retention at Yepco because that one also has been left out for a while there. I believe and whatnot, so they're they're out there cleaning, but obviously they help. And uh speaking with Jesus, not only with this, but help. You can add other different plants during the the spring and summer months as well. The retention basin.
Not like the 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 trees or?
Yeah, the trees as well.
It's overgrown things there.
Oh, no, overgrown trees, I believe so as well. Yeah, because they don't belong to to Sam, hold on, are they are they yours, Sam?
No, it's it but it's gonna be it's gonna be part of the uh to all of JSA in this case because Yezo has a district. Basically, all the districts is gonna be uh taken care of by JSA. That's my understanding.
And you're correct, Vice Mayor, it's always been an issue, yes. And I know the mayor has always uh mentioned this as well.
Is there a motion? A motion of Vice Mayor Garcia. Taken by Councilman Rodan, in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Tell me your opinion, Ben.
Well, uh today we've seen um actually all week long has been kind of a a fluctuation of COVID. Um today, six out of twenty for our zip code have been um just a positive, you know, twenty one percent. Um so that's that's an ongoing uh battle that we always wanna have here in our zip code. Seems that there's a, like I mentioned, it's a fluctuation, but it's also an increase. Overall, the last past ten days, we've seen um over ten percent closer to to twelve percent. Uh stability over the last ten days. I know that we were talking about reopening City Hall, but at this point, there's only two two days we're gonna continue at that point. Um the elections were held on Tuesday. We didn't have any incidents. Over four hundred voters came to City Hall. Um it was a good it was a good night, you know, we had a couple of rumblings, but um. Chief and the police officers did an excellent job and took care of it uh right away. Home rule and general plan unofficially, they 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 pass. Once the official results come in, we'll we'll make sure we thank our residents for the continuous support. Uh yesterday, we wanna um thank Sunset Community Clinic, they they came and and did a flu shot drive for. All of our our staff and family, I I believe some of you did weren't able to to come, so thank you for coming and. It's a continued support from Sunset. So I wanna I wanna appreciate that. Uh Chief Deanda, he he's not here today, uh he had an emergency of his family. But um they sprayed uh twice our City Hall once last week and then obviously Wednesday morning, so thank them and. Um and their staff. Um they continue to do Cocoa Pot Speedway, everybody's using their their mask, so that's that's always helpful. Um Captain Javier Hernandez, they they did a grant and they were approved. Obviously, um the grant was submitted for thirteen thousand dollars in extrication equipment, although it was awarded. Um they cut twenty thousand dollars off the application. This grant by Captain Hernandez will allow us to purchase the balance of the equipment. And then we'll bring that uh to our next council meeting regarding the cost. On Sunday, um B shift, um there was an accident. Um I don't wanna say any names or anything, it's uh on the six hundred block of Van Branton Avenue. And also a another fatality on Wednesday, the fourth on Highway ninety five. And uh Sam, you still here, I thought you were leaving.
Evening, Mayor and City Council, uh an update on the Cesar Chavez, as as I mentioned on your work session, contractors on board. They already uh demolish all the asphalt and lowering the uh manholes and and water walls. So that's probably moving forward. And also, we have our uh VSS International or uh Paying Preservation Contractor here this week. They started with a PMM asphalt sealant. They are already currently working on Rollo, uh Cesar Chavez. And all the courts uh in front of Rollo and by Yezo. They will they will be working this week on the PMM PMM. And also on Monday, we're gonna start the the GSD sealant on um Bill Valley and the Williams Division. Thank you.
What?
Oh, two waters.
Sorry. Much.
Chief, I'm sorry, sorry, chief.
Mayor and Council, I'm happy to announce that we are um holding those uh public meetings for the uh. In infill incentive overlay plan. Um Hector, uh Saul and myself just finished our meeting number six. Uh this week and we have one more tomorrow here at City Hall for those residents that have not been able to attend those other um public meetings. This is a plan that we've been working for the past two years. We are very excited to present it to the public and get their comments and and questions and everything. Uh prior to bring it to the Planning and Zoning Commission and then to council for for a potential approval. Uh we have had a very good turnout and at in any every of those meetings and we have had a lot of questions by the residents that are attending. Um concerns of such a way that they're asking if it's true that the city wants to demolish all of the houses at Borough Town. Which obviously is 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 just at a rumor, so we've been able to clarify a lot of questions and concerns and. And 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 threats that they feel that they had by not knowing what the plan entails. And we are very happy that that the turnout has been very good. It's like there's a lot of uh very um good comments that we have once they they understand the the contents of the of the uh plan. So one more public meeting before we enter into the adoption process where we are going to um be scheduling a. Meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission before bringing it to you for for potential adoption. Also, we have, uh as Mr. Cabrera just mentioned, the twenty twenty general plan amendment has been ratified by our voters. Here in Somerton, we are just waiting for the official results so we can uh bring it to you for uh formal. Um ratification, adoption process and that will finalize the twenty twenty general plan update process. And we're not gonna do this again until ten years, ten more years. And uh the last item is that the Planning and Zoning Commission is complete. Finally, we have all seven members and they're all ready to to start with the uh the meetings. And uh the first meeting with the new members will be with the uh infill intensive overlay plan, so they have a lot to read. Thank you.
Chief put it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A couple of things, not too many, um. We just wanna remind the public to continue to use caution, we're getting a lot of pedestrians during the dark hours of the day, we have a labor, a lot of labor workers. So just be very careful in the early hours in in the evening. Because our pedestrians, sometimes they're not following the crosswalk, so be very careful out there. We've had a couple of high priority cases, our city managers just mentioned that. So we continue to train and we have a particular training that we've uh we're working with uh tribal police and the Cocoa Pot Fire Department. And focus on large scale rescue, so that's one thing that we're working. And the last thing, uh the city manager also mentioned the election went very well, it did. We had a couple of cases that we had to come out here, unfortunately, some uh some people were very pleased by seeing us out there. But our sole intention was to make sure that uh we dealt with the calls that we were asked to respond to. And the last thing I have is that we have submitted for a grant with the Governor's Office of Children, Youth and Families, hoping that they will give us a three-year position. For um a detective that can help us with family uh related crimes. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members, uh just an update of the uh. The Michoacana, they already submitted a building plan, which is corner, it's under review right now. And the uh Orento House already had the building permit for the demolition. It's not gonna be a demolition for the whole building, just uh to create a new door on the uh west side of the building. And also the patio in the south, you have to arrange some columns and not to demolish the building, no. So in the building permit, uh everything that's under review is completed, was up to model. And it's expected to be approved tomorrow. So for the citizens of Somerton, uh residents, um we're expecting to have a new restaurants in downtown. It's a Chinese restaurant, uh so hopefully will be an addition to our community. And I also, I mentioned, I don't know if I mentioned last time, but uh. The Sushi House expanded their their business uh with a new coffee shop, the Holly Fresh, that's the name. Also, they added a outdoor patio area in the front on the west side of the building by the uh by walk. And uh they intend to do a grand opening very soon. Uh as you may know, they also uh buying the building. Very soon, they're closing on the property uh this month. So I was told by the uh future owners of the building, the Sushi House business owners right now. That they will invite you to come to a grand opening. But because of the portion of the building, but also with the Holly Fresh Coffee Shop. And the uh the uh very successful the last couple of years, uh the Sushi House. So you will be invited very soon to to do, we're doing an economic development, a grand opening for that. And of course, when the Michoacana opens and also the new restaurant, we also are gonna do a grand opening. Thank you.
So much to speak to. To uh Sushi House. Councilman Galindo? Councilman Yelpando?
Okay, Mayor, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Um. Reminder, anybody's available this Saturday. They're having that bubble drive and food drive at the same time, so if you need hombres. They'll distribute their food, it starts at nine, so.
As you as you present nine a.m.
Whoever's available, um. Uh, no, I mean. Um and I wanna to thank um the police department and the fire department. I know they worked really hard to remove um. Of cars and everything that's there in order for solar panels to start getting fixed down there, so. Thank you guys and thank you very much um for helping us out um during the election. Hey, just a quick comment, I think this for future elections. A good spot, um more visible and. Yeah. Improvise. Yeah.
People crash.
Any uh on the the.
Um. Not, you know, the same, like Joe mentioned, you know, of taking cases, um. They did mention that um the saliva testing in Yuma and Walton went very well. So they are planning two splits for South County in December. And those will be the first, well, potentially the first two weeks of December. Um that's the well, and and they have mentioned about um the increasing cases with in the schools as well. It changes their the ten percent increase, I believe. Um but other than that, um.
Um you know, I I just wanna, you know, thanks staff for their hard work and everything during this pandemic, I mean it. You know, I can't imagine it's been, you know, it's it's easy. Uh I I do wanna share a comment and and just kinda give kudos to Rita. You know, I I've heard from numerous residents, you know, the fantastic job that she's doing with the Somerton School and. You know, they they uh you know, they comment about her uh, you know, her energy, her her tone of voice, just, you know, it's like. Just seeing the video, I you know, I they get motivated, so I you know, I think it's uh. You know, I I just wanted to share that, I mean, I've heard it from from quite a few residents, not just one. You know, but I mean, after hearing it for a while, I'm like, okay, I think it's. But, I mean, after hearing it for a while, I'm like, okay, I think it's, you know, go ahead and, and let them know, because I've heard it, you know, quite a bit, so, you know, I just wanted to share that. If you, I don't know if you've heard the same, but I mean, that, you know, residents have a person like, now we know what's going on in Somerton, so it's, they're definitely paying attention to those Facebook, uh, postings, so that's all I have, Mayor.
Well, definitely better, though, there's more to come.
Uh, we had a meeting today with, uh, the director for the, the Yuma County, and, uh, I gave your number to, uh, my cell phone number to Diana, she's just writing for the health department about bringing, uh, uh, some time for the testing and all that, so she will be contacting you. That's one of them, they're discussing it, but we did the food drive at the, at the, at the, uh.
Yes.
Yeah, no, no.
Oh, the community center?
The community center, so it will be, you know, basically on a vehicle, or by, or so, so they'll be contacting you that this week, or next week. And, and I'd like to, for, you know, you can put together a, or make an email to us, just the district, on the, the budget for the district. I know we asked to see, you know, how much is up there, so we know what's going on. And I know we got the contract for any, uh, for, for company there, so, so I think we know how much money or, or what budget is for each district.
For each district, okay.
And, and I think on that, you also tell me what's for land, what's for all that.
A breakdown.
One of the six staff, or, or the, the work here during the, the elections, and also, Jerry, you were here since four in the morning, or? Yeah, with the increasing, and, and COVID, uh, you know, one, one for us to start refocusing on that, because it's easy now that we've been through this to, especially now that we're gonna have Thanksgiving and, and Christmas, at least, you, you know, we can't, we can't, uh, tell people not to, oh, we can't tell people, but we can't enforce anything, but at least educate. You know, it's, uh, it's easy, and during this holidays, and we're gonna see an uptick after, yeah, we've seen it, you know, we saw it during Memorial Day, during, what's it, July, and now Thanksgiving, it's gonna happen, so at least we, you know, educate, and at least, uh, you know, some families pay attention, we can save, you know, one or two lives. I think that, that, that we should start doing, because, yeah, we haven't, we kind of terminated the, the, that part, but we're still in the pandemic, it's going up, and we have more experience with it, at least we have masks this time, we're best, but at least, uh, but we can keep educating the public, so with that, and come up with ideas of, have something before, so, before Thanksgiving, and, and, uh, we're gonna, then we have the holiday, so we can have something planned out, and do something either. Facebook post, or a video, or whatever, something that, that we can educate the public. Also, uh, wanna, you know, elections passed, but, but congratulate the, you're, you're gonna be sworn in next, next, next week, so, no, in two weeks. Come in, dress nice, be taking pictures, and bring your family. And, uh, I think that's it, just waiting on, you know, what the outcome of the elections is.
Okay, good.
Councilman, I forgot about it, and I was talking to Chief, uh, Juarez earlier about, yes, I was walking, usually I walk from my house, also with, I was sending him back, and I was going to E S, and there was a police officer, so I stopped, and I was talking to him, and he was, you know, so nice, you know, telling me, uh, he's from here, local from Somerton, mom is a police officer, honor a bit, Cocopah, but he was so excited, telling me, uh, how happy, he loves this job, and I pray that people have treated him at the department and everything. It was so nice to hear something different compared to years before, the, all the complaints from the police department. So I was telling, uh, uh, Chief Juarez, thank you for, for that, because we don't have to worry as much. So we did, we put our, back in the things we used to put, almost a hundred and ten percent of our energies and everything through the police department so far. He was telling me like, that this kid, it's funny, something, how happy he is, and, and everybody's great here, and he was so excited, so. Thank you for that.
I also didn't think the, the pass was, the council chairman's.
It's eight ten, meeting is adjourned.